Like a minute. Well, we'll go. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of the committee of the whole to council, the town of Oliver on Monday, May 11th to order, and I will ask the CEO if there are any late items.
There are no late items to be added to the agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So hearing none, I'll ask if I can have a motion to adopt the agenda as circulated.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask if anyone's opposed. Motion carried. Item D1, adoption of the prior minutes of the March 9th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting. And can I have a motion to adopt the minutes as circulated?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Ask if anyone's opposed. Hearing none, carried. Moving on to Water Matters, item E1, Development Cost Charges by Law Review Update. And I will turn this over to the Director of Development Services.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So today, we have an update from our engineers that have been looking at the development cost charge, our new bylaw. And that's Steve Underwood and Alyssa Schultz, and they'll be providing a presentation as an update for council. Thank you.
Alright, it's gonna take it away.
Sure. Randy, just wondering about screen share. Do you have the presentation up here? Or am I sharing from my end?
You can share from your end if you have that ability down. Just try to click on Share Screen.
Okay.
There you go. Perfect.
We go. Perfect. So hello, everyone. Thank you, Randy. My name is Alyssa Schultz. I am a project engineer from True Consulting and joined by Steve Underwood in our office in Canloops here as well. We're here today to talk about development charges. I'll take us through our presentation. Steve may chime in here and again, or help answer some of your questions. So before I dive in, I maybe get some nods, yes or no. Or is everyone quite familiar with DCCs? Or is this, are some DCCs kind of new for everyone? Just wondering if I can breeze over some of these facts on what DCCs are.
I think I'm the newest one here. I'm comfortable with the breeze through.
Okay, good.
Works for everyone else.
Go right to the meat.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we all know that DCCs are charges to development. They're here to assist local government with paying the capital costs in these major infrastructure projects. They account for things in the official community plan and in the financial plan. And these projects are funded in part by development. They're really projects that are identified to serve the existing population and the future population. So development pays a portion of these projects. It is really the existing population and the municipality to pay the other portion of these project costs. DCCs are also adjusted for grant funding and existing DCC reserve balances. So what has been collected to date. Those reserve balances, you can see them here. Those are from the end of 2019. So we'll loop back around to those. But our categories right now from the DCCs in 2007 are roads, sanitary, water, and parks. There is an opportunity to have another category, which is storm drainage. The town currently doesn't have a DCC for storm drainage. Typically, it's kind of lumped into some of the roads projects that have a small stormwater component. So just a quick snapshot at the existing DCCs. So this is from the bylaw that was created in 2007. You can see on the left here are all the land use categories. So right now, DCCs are broken down into single-family, couple categories, multifamily, three categories, care facilities, so assisted living, and then commercial and industrial. There currently isn't a separate DCC for institutional. But you can see kind of the range on them there. I'll kind of compare back to that single-family one when we're looking at comparing existing to proposed. Before I get into the proposed projects and the proposed new DCCs, I just want to take a second into think about these numbers that were done in 2007. If we adjusted those based on inflation, we use the construction cost index, basically inflation for construction costs. If we take these numbers from 2007 and we inflate them to $2020, what does that look like? So that's shown on this slide here. You can see on the left is the existing DCCs from 2007. And then by inflating those to today's dollars, using that construction cost index, we'd be sitting up over $10,000 in that single family where we're currently 7,500. So in an ideal world, based on the province's best practice, each year, the town will look at adjusting the DCCs based on inflation, so that DCCs would go up a little bit every year, rather than 13 years down the road, looking at a substantial increase. So I'd just like to keep this in mind as we compare our proposed DCCs. It's not quite apples to apples, but it gives us something a bit more practical to compare to. So I mentioned the province's best practices guide. These are some of the steps that we took to develop this update to the DCCs. Generally, we're gonna start by reviewing the format of the bylaw. How long of a timeline are we looking at? Is our DCC is gonna be consistent throughout the whole town? These are some of the questions we ask. We look at population growth during that timeline. And then we're gonna look at what projects are gonna be needed in that timeline based on how much growth we're gonna have and where the town anticipates that growth is gonna be. Then we essentially do a fair bit of math to figure out how much of that project can be attributed to growth and divide it up to each of those land use categories, or some family, multifamily. So that's kind of the steps that we've gone through. And I'm gonna take us through what we've posed as far as our format, population growth, and the projects. And we'll take a quick look at some of the math that we've done there. But to start, the proposed bylaw format is a 10-year revolving program. That's the same as what was done in 2007. We're just a little bit delayed bringing this back around. Municipal wide levies basically means that DCCs are gonna be consistent throughout the municipality. It doesn't matter which part of town that development is gonna happen. And then there's also the assist factor. So the assist factor is basically the portion of the DCC that is gonna be funded by the town. And basically means that these DCCs are just here to assist the municipality with paying for these projects. If a project could be 100% attributed to growth, so 100% recoverable to DCCs, the municipality would still have to pay at least that 1%. So we've set that at the minimum, 1%. Moving on to development projections. So again, on that 10-year timeline, we have assumed a population growth annually of 1%. This is fairly consistent with what we see in the regional district and other municipalities in the area. And that essentially translates to an extra 900, or sorry, 587 people by 2030. So that's for our population growth. And then we also account for some growth from non-residential development. So we've assumed 20,000 square meters of industrial and commercial development per growth of 1,000 people. So that gives us another equivalent population of 110. So we're sitting at close to 700 people. We've estimated equivalents to be added to the town of Oliver in this 10 years. So now we can take a look at some of the projects we've proposed. Based on that percentage growth, that 1%, we've looked at the, some of these projects that either are gonna be carried forward from the 2007 bylaw. So back in 2007, they were quite optimistic on the amount of growth that would be happening. So they'd accounted for, I think, a 3% growth. So they had a lot of projects in that DCC bylaw. Whereas some of that growth didn't happen, some of those projects weren't completed. So we're able to carry those forward into this bylaw. So some of these projects are carried forward, and some of them come from capital planning. So back in 2018, we did our water capital plan, sewer capital plan for the town. So those all kind of feed into this project list. This slide here is a snapshot of the roads projects. You'll see we've got Veterans Avenue Bridge, so another crossing is one of the projects here that was carried over from previous. And then we've got Sumo Camino Avenue reconstruction. We've got a number of projects along the Station Street corridor to service development that's happening through there. And then another project that was carried forward from 2007 is Meadows Drive, a few projects that are happening along, on the other side of town. Getting into our sanitary system projects. These are generally upgrades to existing sanitary sewers. We've got Fairview to Salt Mill Road, Main and Station Street, Sumo Camino, and just upgrades to the existing crossing. And some work near and in the lift station, including front screens, and then some more reclaimed water irrigation. For water supply projects, we've got a number of new water mains proposed. Some looping projects to just improve system performance to account for that population, added fire demand. We've got an additional crossing down on the south, that's Salt Mill Road, Park Drive Looping, Main Street North Looping, backup power, and new primary supply feed, upgrades to Main Street, and then a water reservoir expansion. And the last one here is the parks category. So right now, we have accounting for new park sites just on the northwest end of the lake. And this is based on, the funding we've allocated for this is based on the Oliver and District Parks Master Plan, which uses eight acres of park space per 1,000 population. So we've estimated the cost of new parks based on that eight acres per 1,000 population. Granted that we've got an estimate of about 700 equivalent population being added. And there is also some potential, this is something that came up in our consultation with some of the town staff, was some linear parks that may be possible throughout the municipality. And just a reminder that we haven't proposed any storm projects. Just because those components have been lumped into those roads projects, that if there's a storm component of those projects, it's just included in the roads. So that's a look at the projects that are making up the DCC bylaw, the projects that we anticipate being needed to service this new development. Now I'll go through some of those cost estimates and a look at how much we've attributed to that growth, which basically gives us a bottom line number that we can put toward our single-family, multifamily. So from there, that also includes our suspecter looking at reserves. So those roads projects that we just went through, you can see the DCC percent recoverable. So it ranges from about 8% to 24%. That basically means that that's the portion of new development that we can attribute toward that project. The rest of it is basically servicing the existing population, the existing town. When we take off the assist factor and the existing reserves, we look at the roads projects by trip ends, which is basically a way for us to quantify how much of this is gonna go to a single-family home of a certain size and a multifamily home of a certain size. So it's broken down in trip ends for municipal roads. It's about 4,000. Sanitary system. You can see those percentage recoverable, 8.5% for most of them. And those are projects that basically need to be, a sanitary sewer that will need to be replaced, but will be upgraded to service future population. So that's why we just have that small percent. But we do have reclaimed water irrigation facility that is 100% attributable to growth. Because if we didn't have that growth, that project wouldn't be required at all. And the equivalent here, it comes out to about $700 per capita for sanitary system projects. Water, again, we're seeing about 10% of these projects is gonna be recoverable because of the benefit to the existing population. And we come up with $295 cost per capita. And municipal parks, that one is 100% attributable to growth. And we come up with $1,300 cost per capita. Again, storm drainage, we haven't included there. There really aren't any storm-specific projects that have been identified that would warrant having a separate DCC for storms. So it's just being lumped in with the roads projects. So when we take all of those together and we divide it up to each of those land use categories, this is what we see for our proposed DCCs. So you can see each category here, how it varies for each of the land use categories. And then on the right, we'll see the totals. And I want to bring us back here just before I go to the last slide, to the next slide. If you can remember, at the start, we looked at the existing DCCs and then we inflated them to 2020. So I want us to keep in mind the comparison from existing to inflated to our new proposed. And we can see that here. So on the left, these are our existing DCCs. We're sitting at about 7,500 for a single family. When we inflate that to 2020, based on our, based on construction costs, that comes up to almost 11,000. And our proposed for single family, we're looking at 9,200. So when you compare our proposed to 2007, we are seeing fairly significant increases. But taking into account the increase in construction costs, some of those are coming in lower than our 2007, or they're fairly comparable. So when we do that comparison, the increases in DCCs do seem fairly reasonable. Commercial is the largest increase in DCCs. In 2007, it was a fair bit lower than almost almost half of what the industrial DCCs were. And a fair bit of commercial development happened since 2007. So we have adjusted that so that it's equal to industrial, which is typically what we see. So that's why there's such a significant increase there. And then another useful comparison here is taking that proposed DCC for a single family and looking at some of the other municipalities in the BC interior. So I've pulled some here. It's definitely not all of them. But it is a bit of a useful comparison to see the range in DCCs that you'll see for a single-family development. There is the average of all of these at the top, sitting around 11,500. So we are coming in on the lower end there, comparable to municipalities like Salmon Arm, Soyuz, Carneyas, and Summerland. But this is really just to illustrate the range and where these proposed DCCs sit in that range. So that is what, what has come about through our upgrade to the DCCs. We have had some consultation with developers and town staff to feed into this, and we've adjusted based on that feedback. Based on that, our next steps here would basically be gathering feedback from council and then proceeding to a first reading of the DCC bylaw. This is all based on the province's best practices guide. So from there, we would host a public information meeting. Again, adjust the bylaw as needed based on feedback that's gathered from the public or additional feedback from staff and council. From there, would continue to second and third reading. At that point, it would be submitted to the Inspector of Municipalities for approval. Again, revisions as needed, and depending on those revisions, it may go back for public information or readings from council. But granted that approval comes through, then it would proceed to the fourth reading and adoption of the new bylaw. Another next step that kind of comes long after that, that I really like to bring up is that the town can consider those minor amendments to the DCC every year. I mentioned that at the start. It's something that is allowed in the best practices guide to look at the cost of construction and inflation annually to adjust the DCCs. So that hopefully every year, you see a slight increase. And then when we come around to that 10-year, when we need to redo this program again, the increase won't be so significant as we will have done incremental increases annually. So those are the next steps that we've identified from here. I would welcome your questions, and we'll call on Steve to help with any of those.
One.
Thank you, Alyssa. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
That I just thought I'd add is, we did, as Alyssa mentioned, present this to the developers. And they saw the order of magnitude, these numbers that we're proposing. And surprisingly, they were quite supportive of them. We, you know, developers usually want things to be cheaper, but they understood the value and what they were getting from these DCCs and recognized that they weren't significantly higher than the neighboring communities. And basically, the feedback we received was that they were, they were generally happy with the values we were proposing.
Thank you, Steve. Mayor and council, any questions?
I have a question. Because it's feeding from your screen, I can't seem to get the, put the hand up thing. But my question is around the parks, DCCs. And I'm looking at the report on a different computer, and I know you showed it. What is the increase from the previous to the current? For, for the parks?
I would have you.
Now it's going to be 2972, for example, for a single family. What, what is there? That's, that's the proposed. What is the existing?
It might take me a second to grab that. I don't have it right on me. I don't have that.
I think, I think you had it earlier on, but, well, maybe not. No, it didn't break down.
Yeah, I may have not had it broken down, but I can definitely grab that.
The reason I'm going in this direction and the reason I'm asking you questions, because when I look at the parks, DCCs and the way that they're calculated, I see it's based on a master plan for the Oliver and area. Based on the population of Oliver and area, you know, with about 4,500 from the rural and 4,500 from the town, and that we're basing our demands on both of those. And yet the rural doesn't fund any of our parks. We are expected to do all of this as a town. And yet we're funding on behalf of that other population when they don't contribute. And I'm wondering why we do that. And on part one, and, and if you take the half of the population out, then we're overparked for our town population. We have too much already. Now, I'm not saying that I don't want more parks. I don't want anyone to misunderstand me in that regard. I'm totally in favor of it. I'm just looking for ways to keep our DCCs competitive so that people will develop here as opposed to somewhere else. And, and, and again, we don't have the old bylaw to compare to this bylaw, or the last report to compare to this report. But I believe that with the money that was in our DCC funds, we used a ton of that to build parks up by the high school and also to build a new park by the bridge. I don't think any of those were in our previous DCC bylaw. So what I'm suggesting is, is that the previous level of funding for our parks in the DCC bylaw was sufficient to provide what we want over the longer term. We don't need to increase our parks funding because what we have now is sufficient.
Counselor Grace?
Yes?
I just pulled up the bylaw. Currently, our parks for a single-family dwelling one is $2,332.20.
Yeah, so that's, so that's a $600 difference. And I know it's not huge. But it does, I mean, one of our roles is to keep costs down for developers if we, in fact, want to attract development. So if we can fund what we need in parks for our population, I mean, it would be easy. I'm not sure why we're adding in the rural population to our parks required. Maybe you can give me an answer on that one. When I looked at the when I looked in the report calculations, you know, rural population 4,200 and the town population of 5,600, but so we're calculating our requirements based on 10,000 instead of 6,000. I don't know why we're doing that. We don't do it with anything else, roads, sewer. And yet those same people drive on our roads. So I'm puzzled.
Thanks, Counselor Mattis. I don't know if Alyssa or Steve, or perhaps the Director of Development Services wanted to tap that.
DCC calculation is, is only for the 700 people that would be added to the town in the DCC horizon, the 10-year horizon. It's, I think Dave's, or Counselor Mattis's concern is somewhat separate from this, but we could definitely increase the assist factor to the parks segment to reduce that, if that's what council desired, to, to recognize that they're supporting developers in a way.
No, what I'm suggesting, what I'm suggesting is that our base number is too high. I think the gross number, the 700, is fine. I'm okay with that. But our base number is more than the town population. So we started with a bigger number than what was required. And now we're gonna add to that bigger number than what we need. That's my concern. It's not the 700, it's the 10,000. Your requirement for 31 hectares of park is based on a population of 10,000. We won't have that. We don't have that.
Yeah, but the, what they're saying is that eight acres per 1,000 people. So what we're trying to do is add money to the DCC or the parks DCC for 700 people. So that's to buy equivalent of six, eight additional acres and whatever. Equivalent of six eight additional acres and whatever it is in that time period.
But what I'm suggesting is is you're adding to an incorrect base.
Yeah. Yeah. So what you're saying, but that's the Parks Master Plan, which you're then saying is incorrect, not necessarily the DCC calculation.
Right? So the the Parks Master Plan is based on us providing parks for the rural. Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, we just followed the Parks Master Plan. We didn't suggest that it was correct or incorrect.
No, but and the Parks Master Plan says. Eight acres of park space per thousand. So that would make us having a based on this. Forty eight acres of park space, if I'm doing the math roughly correct. I don't know how many hectares that is. But that's based on town population. And the thirty one hectares or thirty two point two hectares that you're proposing is based on rural population. And so I'm not sure if you're. Understanding what I'm trying to say here, but we're already over parked for our population.
For the town's population.
For the town's population. We're not over parked if we include the regional district. But the regional districts parks are not our concern.
Counselor Schwarzenberger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, it's a little bit confusing, I think, because maybe we need to get. To have a look also, or Steve could take a look also at the Parks Master Plan. Because I'd be interested to know which part of the, I mean, there are several parks in Oliver. That are funded by the RDOS and the town jointly. Through Oliver Parks and Rec. And are those, how are those calculated as opposed to the parks that we fund a hundred percent?
Operations are funded. We buy them. We own them. But operations are shared. And this is for ownership.
Are there any other comments or questions? C O, is this just for information or do we need a motion?
I'm thinking, I'm not sure. Randy, can you answer that question, please? I think they wanted, they need some feedback so that they can go in and do any adjustments that are requested from council. So. If there is adjustments that you would like, or if you want to get more detailed information with regards to the Parks Master Plan. And then have it brought back for for consideration to proceed on to first reading. That might be the direction to give to. Our Director of Development Services.
Thank you, C O. Counselor Ben Tumila?
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to add just on the conversation of parks. That if we are basing the our, you know, the amount of parks that we require on Oliver and area, so Oliver and area. See on a larger number than just our immediate population. I. Perhaps there's a better way to fund it, but that's exactly, in my opinion, what we should be doing because there. There are invisible borders that we all cross all the time, and the reality is that. The entire for the Oliver and area population are the ones that use the parks that just happen to be inside the municipal. I would disagree that we're over. I think that we should be building ourselves up so that we can serve our community and area because that's who live, works, plays, spends time here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schwarzenberger, did you have another comment or is your hand still up? Okay, it's down now. Counselor Mattis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't disagree with Councilman Ventimila one bit. I totally support that we. Get more parks, that we have more parks. I'm just concerned with how this calculation has been done strictly for parks. When the same argument could be used for roads. Improvements because the same people that she's referring to from the greater area use those roads, but we don't use them in the calculation. So I just want apples to apples calculations here is all I'm looking for. And based on the previous history of our DCCs and the money that we have pulled out of parks. Which I think is to the tune of six or seven hundred thousand dollars. Over the course here in order to build the parks at the high school. And in order to build the park at the river that is currently under construction, that our. Parks DCCs are adequate adequately funded at the level that they're at today. It's I'm not I'm not disagreeing with gathering more money for more parks. I'm just saying I don't think we need to gather quite as quickly because we have been overfunded. Based on the requirements that we actually have.
Thank you, Counselor Mattis. Counselor Ben Tumila?
Yeah, just on that point as well. I think if I understood correctly, and I'm still having a bit of issues with technology, so I keep bouncing in and out, but if I understood correctly. The the money that's been used to fund some of our linear parks and Bridge Park, those parks don't actually were not actually identified in the original DCC. And. If that's the case, it's nice that the money was there to use, but I think that it's really important that we. Create a DCC bylaw that we are going to follow and then that we follow that bylaw because. We're pulling out, pulling out and pulling out money because it's there and that's great. But what about these larger projects that we are actually meant to be saving for, such as the new park on Tuckaloot? We don't know how much that's going to be. We don't know when it's going to become available. And we want the money there for the projects that have been identified when we need it. So that I think that's important, that the projects are identified properly and that we then in turn follow our bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Ben Tumila. Counselor Mattis, show him the comment.
Oh, sorry, I meant to take my hand down, but I will have a comment and again, that's. There is sufficient funding at our current level to do exactly what Counselor Ventimila is is alluding to. We have eight hundred or seven hundred and some thousand dollars in there, and when you take three thousand dollars. Per new development or new lot or whatever you want to call it in town strictly for parks. When you extrapolate that over seven hundred. Units, that's a fair chunk of change that will be going into that parks fund. So we're not shortchanging the parks fund at all. We're. Overfunding. We will have more than enough money in order to do the the park that is identified in this. Report.
Steve, go ahead.
Just to clarify that it's it's one hundred population, but it's not seven hundred units. So the single family residential would just be represent. Like two and a half population or or I forget, maybe Alyssa, you can correct the exact number we use per single family for a population.
It's a single family wants two point two five.
So it's. Seven hundred population. Two point two five is three hundred additional units.
At three thousand dollars apiece calculates out to.
Well, if it was three thousand each, it would be nine hundred thousand dollars.
It is three thousand dollars each. It's twenty nine hundred and change. So. It's nine hundred thousand dollars plus eight hundred thousand that's currently in there. We'll have more than enough money in order to build that park that's in the DCC budget.
So to that end, council, is there a motion to go on the, oh, so I'm sorry, over to the C O?
Thank you. I did want to point out that we also have to buy the land, not just develop it.
Does council have a motion to like to put on the table? Counselor Ben Tumila?
Yes, so just to the C O's comment that we have to buy as well as develop, I think we we have identified some. Projects, one of which is quite large. Personally, I'm comfortable proceeding with the way that's been suggested. That doesn't mean that once our larger projects are complete that we can't revisit this on a on a wider scale. But personally, I don't think that right now is the time to do it.
Counselor Mattis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I totally support all the other projects on the list. I don't know whether. What was new to this list versus what was old on the other list or whether we've actually completed some of the other ones. Totally support all of the projects on the list. I just think there's an opportunity for us to be a little more competitive. When it comes to development, that people can choose Oliver over somewhere else when it comes to our DCC charges. And I I would. I'll make the motion. It'll probably be defeated, but I'll make the motion that staff be directed to revisit. And fine tune the DCC. Charges for parks. They may come back with exactly the same answer, but I want another look.
Thank you, Counselor Mattis. There's a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that. As it is just basically requesting more information and. Even the information that after it comes forward is going to go through. Three readings, a public, a public hearing and. Off to the provincial government, so there'll be lots of opportunity to get additional input from. From everyone with regard to that. So I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Schwarzenberger. C O, leave your hand up.
Sorry, forgot to take it down.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, is anyone opposed? No one is opposed. The motion carries. Okay, well, thank you to Alyssa and Steve. Appreciate your time. And moving on to business item F one, emergency support. Services, registration and assistance system agreement. And I will turn it over to the corporate officer.
Thank you, Chair Grace. The report before council is to seek authorization to enter into the Emergency Support Services Registration and Assistance. System Agreement with Emergency Management B C. The purpose of this agreement is to allow access to the E R A tool. And to form a protection of the personal information that is obtained from an evacuee. If they're requiring assistance. Over the last year, E M B C has been improving and modernizing the E S S program. They've changed the name from Emergency Social Services to Emergency Support Services. And they're continuing to adapt due to the COVID pandemic. And wanting to ensure the health and safety of those delivering and receiving emergency supports. They are moving, ramping up the E R A tool. To support local governments and in the virtual delivery of emergency support services. The E R A tool will allow the ability for evacuees as well to self register. Which will help reduce the personal interactions with E S S support staff. The agreement. The E S S paper registration and the referral forms which we currently use. Will stay into circulation throughout the the rollout and as well will continue to be available. For use in the event of internet or or power disruptions. In the organizational part of the agreement. Requires endorsing of the agreement with council's approval. Establishing B C E I D accounts. Setting up super users. Contacting all our suppliers that we're moving to a electronic format, so they will understand that when they receive it. And then as well to provide some training for the E S S team members that are in place right now. We have had to purchase additional outlook licenses. We didn't have enough. To provide Oliver dot C A email addresses for our volunteers. So there's some options before council this afternoon. Is to authorize staff to enter into the Emergency Support Services Registration Assistance Agreement with E M B C. Or council may choose not to enter into the agreement at this time with Emergency Management B C. Or refer back to staff for additional information. And the recommendation before council is that council direct staff to enter into the Emergency Support Services Registration and Assistance. System Agreement with Emergency Management B C until February first, twenty twenty nine. And that town council authorizes the town signing authorities to endorse the the agreement. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Vakovic. And mayor and council, are there any questions or comments? Seeing or hearing none, I'll ask if anyone wishes to move proposed motion?
I'll move the proposed motion.
Thank you, Counselor Schwarzenberger. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Johansson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask if anyone is opposed. And the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item F two, RDOS Emergency Management Regulatory Bylaw Review Update. This is for information and I will turn it over to the C O.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report is before council to provide an update on the RDOS Emergency Management Regulatory Bylaw Review. The Regional District and its six member municipality C O group have been reviewing the Emergency Management Program. And the regulatory bylaw that was originally adopted in two thousand and seven does require some updating. Mister Newell is planning on presenting this draft bylaw to the Regional District Protective Services Committee on May twenty first and asked that. We give a heads up to our municipal councils so that they were aware that it was coming forward. So the bylaw that's being presented is establishing a regional emergency management committee, which will consist of all members of the. RDOS board chaired by the Chair of the Protective Services Committee. It will also be establishing an emergency planning team that is going to be chaired by the RDOS C O. And will consist of the C O member municipalities. This team will support the committee with fulfilling the obligations of creating an emergency organization referred to under section. Six, three of the Emergency Program Act. When this is being provided for information only, and it's just so that you're aware that it's coming. Under the. Under the draft bylaw. It does indicate that the the emergency planning team will be responsible for the formation. Ongoing review and evaluation of the Regional District Emergency Response Plan. And the integration of Regional District Member Municipal and Other Agency and Volunteer Emergency Services required for the preparedness. Ensuring that the regional emergency operation center is organized and prepared to respond to regional events. And it's also outlined in the draft. Bylaw. They'll work closely and support the member municipalities implementing the municipal emergency planner declaring a state of local emergency. So this is going to help to, it's been a little bit disjointed over the last few years. And we're looking to ensure that the program provides the appropriate level of support. To all communities involved with emergency. Management due to the fact that boundaries. Aren't around when it comes to an emergency. And this does not talk to the Establishment Bylaw, which is the Establishment Bylaw is it's the funding part of it and that's. And that's something that as the CAO group will look at that part to make sure that funding formula is put in place that is equitable for everybody for the level of service that is being provided to their community. So that will be coming forward at a later date once the regulatory bylaw is put into place and they have that committee formed. The current one has all sorts of operational type agencies in it. And it was developed just after the 2003 fires. So they were looking at more of the development of the original, the original emergency operations plan. And now it's being brought down to just the municipal level. And that's, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Cowan. And mayor and council, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. Moving on then to public question period. And I see that we have no attendees, so I will then ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you. And second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Is anyone opposed? And the meeting is adjourned. Y'all in a minute.